... by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and a pledge allegiance by Councilmember David Montgomery.
Honors pray. Holy Father, we are thankful for this day that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Lord God, for rest on last night. We thank you for this city. We thank you for this state. We pray for those, Lord God, who have trouble in their cities. We pray for those who have loss of life. We pray for their families. We pray, Lord God, for our Chief of Police, Esther, in this city. Lord, give him wisdom and knowledge to do the things that bring peace to the neighborhoods that we serve. Lord, we thank you for his service. Father, we ask that you give us direction this day in this meeting. In the name of Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face our flag and join me in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
All present. Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion, with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. If there's a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council-appointed Sergeant-at-Arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
All right, counsel, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the May 3, 22 regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Action, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Need to make a motion to amend the amendments. It needs to reflect that Mr. Maggio's vote in favor of the agenda item, Ordinance 31 of 2021, increasing the appropriated amount by $400,000 using American Rescue Plan Act grant to extend the nanofiltration pilot study and to reflect Mr. Maggio voted, and not Mr. Harvey, in favor of the agenda item. Also, the ordinance authorizing the amendment with Mancheck Consulting Group, Inc., to provide engineering services for the city of Bossier City.
That's all in the minutes. We just corrected the minutes?
Yes, correct in the minutes.
I'll second that. Any questions from the audience about this? Counsel, any questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Did it come up, counsel?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just came out.
Motion carries. And so now we would need a motion to approve the minutes as amended and dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second. Counsel, any questions? We have any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to make Adam 5 under unfinished business as an introduction and not final adoption.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond, did yours come up?
Oh, I'm sorry. It popped up just now.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
We have any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Sermonial matters?
We have a citizen's life-saving award from the fire department.
On April 4, the school resource officer at Airline High School, Deputy Matt Rigger, became a local celebrity. Deputy Rigger's quick action and skill training saved the life of a faculty member who was choking. The entire event was caught on the school's security camera and has since gone viral. School resource officers are a valuable part of Bossier schools, and I am proud to recognize Deputy Rigger by representing him with the citizen's life savings award.
So, on behalf of Chief Sagon and the fire department, I'll just read this real quick. The Deputy Matt Rigger, recipient of the citizen's life-saving award, in recognition of your heroic actions to Sheila Rivers for performing the alignment maneuver while she was choking during lunch at Airline High School located in Bossier City, Louisiana, on April 4, 2022. As a result of your efforts, her life was saved, and because of these actions, we present you with the highest honor and be served upon the Bossier City Fire Department to a citizen the citizen's life-saving award. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Counsel, I was just informed that the Sudden Link stream is down again, but anybody that's watching on YouTube or online, they're able to watch it, but Sudden Link is not working.
My bill's going up. Sudden Link, get it together. Bids?
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P22-05, Bossier Arts Council Brick Cladding.
Good afternoon, counsel, Mayor Chandler. Today we are opening the bids for the Bossier Arts Council Brick Cladding, and we have one bid. It is from Aquarius Contractors, and they do have their bid bond. The total amount is $484,000. That's 484,000.000. And I ask that you take this under consideration.
Make a motion.
Motion, we approve it under advisement.
I'll second that, Dave.
I'll second that.
Comments?
Comments from the council?
Audience?
Comments from the audience? Brooke, you got a comment?
No comment.
Thank you.
Vote. It should be up.
Say again?
The votes should be up.
All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Unfinished business. Adopting ordinance to amend Ordinance 92 of 2020 to cover construction costs for the Highway 71 Street Lighting Project Phase II project for a total of $681,782 to come from the Parkway Capital Projects Fund. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance allocating $50,000 for the procurement and implementation of an enhanced backflow prevention and cross-contamination control system using the Parkway Capital Project Fund to cover all project costs. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to declare the completion of the East Texas Industrial Airlines Sewer Rehabilitation Project by Horseshoe Construction, Inc., at a total construction cost of $1,095,169, including change order number one and to amend Ordinance 71 of 2020, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement the sewer capital and contingency fund. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience?
Good afternoon, counsel. My name is Kerry Chandler. My address is 2924 Heather Lane in Bossier City. And my question on this is, how much of a surplus is left over from this project?
Well, sure. Find out here in a second, hopefully.
It looks like if I'm not mistaken, you're $92,575.44. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chandler, if you look on the screen right behind you, it has the amount on it. It was all in the attachments on the agenda.
Almost, yeah, almost $93,000. Any more questions? Counsel, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. I don't know if I went to the wrong thing and made a miss-up. I bet the motion carried unanimously on that. Adopting ordinance to appropriate funds for improvements to the lateral B1 drainage canal for a total of $35,000 to come from the sales tax capital improvement fund and to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Nixon Engineering Solutions. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance amending Ordinance 31 of 2021, increasing the appropriated amount by $400,000 using the, I'm sorry, this is the introduction. Introducing ordinance, amending Ordinance 31 of 2021, increasing the appropriated amount by $400,000 using the American Rescue Plan Act grant to extend the nanofiltration pilot study. First reading?
So moved.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Come on up, Mr. Chandler.
Kerry Chandler, 2924 Heather Lane, Bossier City, Louisiana. With this additional funding, has anybody discussed about the, if we're going to clean up our water with this nanofiltration for extra, an additional $400,000, what are we going to do about the water pipes if we get really clean water, which is what we want, and you put it in pipes that are 40, 50 years old, and you test them at the end, it doesn't do any good to get the water really clean if the pipes haven't been prepared up to better standards than what they are today?
We have replaced a whole bunch of water and sewer pipes. Now, where, I can't tell you. I don't know if Ben can answer that question. I mean, hopefully, we're going to have clean water when we're done. Like I said, a lot of the pipes.
Okay, well, what's this going to do besides the $81 million we spent on the water system in 2014? What's, how's it going to help beyond what we're doing today?
Well, the Louisiana Department of Health, when we met several years ago, I was appointed the representative and went down with Justin Haydell, the lead engineer for Mancheck, when it was discovered that we had amoeba in one of the water lines. And LDH's Dr. Gidry, at the time, made a strong recommendation that we get off of chloramines. And without getting technical, we can certainly provide you that documentation.
That's okay. Yeah.
But what we have right now are called chloramines. That's how we treat our water. The chloramines lead to something called nitrification in the pipes, which nitrification then harbors potentially the amoeba. So by us getting off of chloramines and going to free chlorine, which that's what nanofiltration allows us to do, then we have mitigated and minimized forever the possibility of these little organisms growing in our system.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's the purpose of this.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
And Councilman Williams, thank you to Mr. Russianbach for having a master's class with us last week on all of this. Kind of was a lot to take in, but I had lots of questions that he answered, and so I do feel comfortable moving forward to at least continue studying and see where we go from here, so.
Good.
And just for the record, Mr. Montgomery said that a whole lot easier than what Mr. Russianbach said the other day. So if you ever need to take his job.
Thank you, Dave.
I was trying to keep it simple. I mean, there's a lot more going on, but.
I lost some brain cells last week because I was trying to understand so hard what he was saying.
I thought that Manganese was it.
But again, we are following exactly what the Department of Health recommended that we do.
Yeah, Mr. President, I will second on what Mr. Smith said after the meeting. I know we both had a lot of questions on that, and after our almost two-hour meeting, we fully understand the importance of this now, so.
Any more questions from the audience? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond, did yours pop up?
Yeah, it's for some, I'm having to do it twice. There it goes.
Motion carries. Sorry. Adopting ordinance authorizing the attached amendment with Mancheck Consulting Group, Inc., to provide engineering services for the city of Bossier City. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
How are y'all doing? I'm David Crockett from 653 Bossier City, Louisiana, but I live just north of Bossier City, in full disclosure to the mayor and to the council. I thought a lot of good issues were brought up on this in the last meeting, issues like, you know, why has the city not already hired a city engineer? There's a city engineer authorized and an assistant. The mayor's staff hasn't been hired. I looked at the advertisement for the position. It was opened on May 2, so that's relatively late. Mayor, I know I've asked you about this since you were elected mayor, that this is probably one of the most important positions in the city. I think Ben does a great job with Mancheck, and he does a great job in these meetings explaining what's going on, but I think it's in the best interest of the city to have a full-time city engineer and an assistant, if that's what the staff requires. But I think the thing that's a little bit bothersome about the whole last meeting, and granted, Ben explained, you know, how much you could, you know, have to pay for a city engineer with that kind of experience. There needs to be a market survey. The mayor needs to be staffed. That discussion didn't happen, and to me, it's like this is the root cause of what's causing the problem. So it doesn't look like it's being fixed. And I know some people may question why I'm so interested in this, but as Bossier City goes, the rest of this parish goes, and I have always had an interest in this. I've lived in this city for 15 years, not including the time when I was a squadron commander at Bossier City at the base. But anyway, I think it is a major concern for the whole city that the engineering projects, where they get priority, and I think also one of the issues that, there's just a perception issue that if Mancheck and what it's costing, it's, to me, it's clear as the Red River right now, you know, how much it's actually costing to hire Mancheck to do this job, because every year, you know, it's not a cost-plus contract. It's not any, this is a fee-for-service contract, and anything over, I guess, and it's not even clear in what we read whether this is for 80 hours for two people. That's not the way it reads with what was put before the council, and it's not really clear, and I wish the, you know, city was, that that was explained. That's really all I have right now. But thank you for letting me speak. Appreciate it.
Well, in my opinion, we do have a city engineer. He's sitting right there, and I don't think you got a, and we've had two engineers, city engineers before. We had a city engineer, we had an assistant, and maybe one reason.
Can I address that? The issue with that is you need a staff separate. I think they're doing a great job, but there are a lot of issues with change orders and things like that where you need somebody fully loyal only to the city that goes and reviews those things, that reviews the contracts. But if you have Mancheck supervising, Mancheck reviewing and issuing contracts, then the perception is what you have to address in a community like this, and I appreciate you saying that and giving me a chance to comment, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Again, I'll just, I'll reply, you can sit down, but I'll, if you want to, but I'll reply, there's nobody more loyal, I'm telling you, than Ben Russianbach. Like I said, he grew up in Bossier City. I knew his dad, you know, he's, and they give more than 40 hours a week. That I guarantee you. I really do. And people will say, well, you know him. No, it's not because I know him, because I know how it works, and I know how Clinton works. And it takes two city engineers to run this place.
Any more questions from the audience? Counsel?
Mr. President, last meeting, we addressed this issue, and we wanted to know if the CEO would provide documentation of his commitment not to retroactively build the city. And I'm glad to report that that document was provided to the city, and if you have your contract, you will note that. So they, Mr. Rockenbach kept his word, and we all know he does anyway, so everybody should have a sense of confidence because the CEO did provide that documentation.
Thank you, Mr. Darby.
And Mr. Darby, I will add, I should have done a better job explaining the provisions and the terms of the contract. In the contract itself, it does state that the $20,000 a month begins, that fee begins on June 1 of 2022. So with the provisions of the contract and, you know, the letter and the statements from Mancheck, the city is ironclad, as legally speaking, that we will not be billed retroactively.
Any more questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance authorizing the reclassification of the part-time property standards clerk position in the engineering department to a full-time cross-contamination manager in the permits and inspections division, resulting in an increase to the operating budget of $42,740.82 to be covered by revenues from permit fees. Final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Just my second. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business.
Introducing ordinance authorizing addition of one auto mechanic, one position in the fleet services department, and amending the general fund budget. First reading?
So moved.
Second. Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to transfer $10,000 from the police department to the public affairs department in the 2022 general fund budget to hire a part-time temporary media relations manager. First reading?
So moved.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, I've got one, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
This being a part-time contract for $10,000, I mean, do we have, how long is this contract going to be for? I know $10,000 is not going to go very far. How long are we going to have that?
Good afternoon, counsel. As you're well aware, you know, with civil service, we're unique, and, you know, you have up to 365 days, so hopefully at this point, it will get us through the rough spell that we're having without a permanent person in that position. It's quite taxing at times whenever I have other members of the department who are pulling two and three different assignments and pulling them to handle the PR side of the police department. By far, the police department uses the PIO more than anybody within the city.
Unfortunately.
But just to go ahead and clear up a few things, as of right now, as of the 30th, the police department is 4% under our operating salary line, so, I mean, we have an abundance of $410,435.42, so it's really not hurting us, and we're already budgeted for it, and since we're the leading user of the PIO for the city, we feel that it would be best for us to contribute our fair share to that, to help out the city.
Okay. Any questions, counsel?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance authorizing Carol Anderson to extend the attached alcoholic beverage contract between Bossier City Civic Center and Thrifty Liquor. First reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council?
Wait, how long is this contract for?
Through May the 8?
May 2027, it says.
Carol, where do we, and we talked about this in the past, it looking at proposals?
Yeah, we did a request for proposal, and only one came back, and so this contract will go for a year, and then it can be renewed.
That's all I need. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Carol. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution recognized in May 22, 2022, as a National Maritime Day. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second. Phil, do you have that resolution? Or you want to read it?
Do we want to read it? We've never read it in the past. We've never read it in the past, but do we want to read it?
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? It's pretty long.
It is long.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one fire information technology analyst position due to a vacancy from resignation. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the reclassification of two part-time event coordinators in the Bossier Civic Center from full-time to part-time and to authorize the hiring of two part-time event coordinators for the Bossier Civic Center. First and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council?
So, so we're taking two full-time people, making them part-time people, and then hiring two more full-time people?
Two more part-time.
Two more part-time.
Or two more part-time?
We're just taking the two full-time positions and putting, and transferring them to part, to reclassify them as part-time, until they'll just be two part-time event coordinators.
And then hiring two more part-time coordinators?
Just two.
She doesn't have the two right now.
I don't have anybody right now.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. The way I was reading it was, okay.
Yeah, I was asking to reclassify and then go ahead and have the authorization to hire them at the same resolution.
So does that leave you shorthanded with full-time people there when you have events?
Well, I've never had the full-time people there.
They just come in and work when?
Right. It's just been me and Terry, the operations manager. It's just been me and Terry, the operations manager. So this is going to be a little bit of help.
So is he going to part-time?
No, no. I have the operations manager full-time, and then I just...
Because he's fantastic.
Yes, he is, I agree.
I know he's a lot of help to you.
He is great.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Well, year-to-date, the civic center's up 337%. So that's pretty good.
I asked if it was a typo.
And it was not.
Did you do what?
I asked if it was a typo when I saw the number.
Well, it basically closed last year, but yeah, Carol's doing a good job over there, no doubt. She's doing outstanding job. Now she won't come back to you.
Counsel, please cast your vote.
No comment.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an office manager for the public utilities department. First and final reading?
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote. My air just keeps wandering. Maybe it's my finger.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to establish a six-month trial for South Bossier routes with Sportran. First and final reading?
So move.
Second. Senator, would you like to come up and say anything about this?
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity. I think it's been a great partnership to be able to work through this process. We've been able to identify the route as well as identify the locations and the stops that works with the mayor as well as the council. So I'm hoping this is a great trial program. We'll continue to communicate and work and provide the data as requested to try to make sure this is a great pilot program for the citizens here in Bossier. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, may I ask?
Yes, sir.
On the stops, are you planning to have the benches or just the signage?
So at this point in time, we're just putting signage out because it's a trial. If we determine that these are great locations, we will go back and look to do additional amenities at each stop as well. We'd actually just want a federal grant for 1.9 million to go in and throughout Shreveport and Bossier and put additional amenities in at bus stops.
Okay.
Any more questions for Mr. Washington?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counsel?
Audience?
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
It didn't come up.
Yay.
It came up?
No, it didn't.
It did, okay, yay.
Yay.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for Public Works to transfer a laborer one in streets and drainage to street sweeping and grass cutting and to transfer a laborer one in solid waste to streets and drainage. First and final reading?
So move. Second.
Wade, just, this was just a reclassifying in your district, in your office to actually put them where they belong.
Good afternoon, yes, I had people in different departments, and I just wanted to get everybody where they belong to help me kind of determine if I need to add any additional people or eliminate any positions. It's, uh, it's, it gets confusing at times. Help me straighten my budget out.
Yeah, and it, over the last couple of years, I know they were just everywhere, but...
Again, I want to thank you for also, all the cleanup on the tornado that came through here, you and your guys working overtime, getting everything cleaned up though.
Appreciate all the help from everybody in the community, too. There was, there were a lot of people chipped in down there and helped out with that.
Thank you, Wade. Any more questions, or counsel? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for Public Works to transfer our laborer one in street sweeping and grass cutting to a laborer two in streets and drainage and to transfer a laborer two in street sweeping and grass cutting to a laborer one in solid waste. Laborer one transfer and pay change is a title change. First and final reading?
So move. Second.
Any questions from the audience? And of course, counsel, that's kind of the same thing we just did. Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution, repealing resolution number 57 and number 69 of 2021. First and final reading?
So move.
Charles, what are those?
Second.
Second.
Happy for the motion.
I'm sorry.
Back last July, there was a moratorium that was enacted by the council that prohibited the purchase of vehicles without specific council approval, which must be done by resolution. The problem that we've run into, and I made Rodney come to the city council meeting because he can explain it better than I have, is that with these supply chain issues and, um, uh, you know, I guess it's COVID-related, the, all these manufacturers have certain windows and deadlines, and they're constantly changing. You know, it was June, you know, now it's May 19th, you know, next week. And so the problem, and I'll let Rodney explain it if you want some further detail, is is that if we have to wait, um, you know, 10 days or two weeks, or we might miss this deadline. But however, in the repeal of the ordinance, it states that that vehicle or that the money for the vehicle must be in an existing budget. And that has to be certified by Rodney after he checks with Angela and then signed off by the mayor to make sure that nobody or any department is not spending money on vehicles that have not been previously budgeted. And of course, the budget is approved by the city council.
So we could get into a situation where, I understand what you're saying, we're ordering vehicles now, but they may not come in.
Right.
I mean, they may not come in till mid-2023 or later.
Well, the situation that we've encountered here lately is we thought the deadline, the window, was going to be sometime in June or July for 2023 vehicles. Now Chevrolet, and Chevrolet only, has now accelerated that deadline till May 19th, somewhere in that. And so if you don't get those in by May 19th, then those vehicles you need for 2023 are going to be here in 2024, if you're lucky. So it, it's just, you know, it's, I guess, I hate the term, but it new normal, I guess. So it's just dealing with, it, the flexibility, provided that the money's already approved by the council in the budget so that the departments can function.
Yeah.
Mr. Williams, did you second that?
I did.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
With May 19th being this Thursday, um, could we not have just written an ordinance appropriating the approval of all the vehicles we need for 2023?
We don't have a 2023 budget. So we, these, these vehicles, the ones that are being purchased are going to be in the, they've already been budgeted for 2022. And so to do a resolution for these specific vehicles, you could have done that. But then again, what comes up in the future? And so if you're going to, if you're going to be writing resolutions for specific vehicles, what if Chevrolet comes up tomorrow and says, hey, guess what? The deadline's now May 18th. So it's all, and I'll let Rodney explain if you want him to, but this stuff is all subject to change at any given time. It's, it's just, and there's really no rhyme or reason to it. Or there is, but it's, it's manufacturer-based.
All right, counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Montgomery, did yours come up? Motion carry. Discuss and possible action on canceling meeting on May 31st, 2022.
So move.
Second.
What's your, what is your motion for, Mr.?
Oh, my motion is to cancel the meeting, May 31st, 2022.
Mr.?
Do you still second that?
For you, second that?
I second that emotion.
Right after language.
Emotion?
Oh. On Memorial Day?
Or Memorial.
Oh, okay, yeah.
November holiday.
Counsel, there was some discussion before, when we had these meetings, before the back-to-back meetings, and y'all weren't real wild about having the back-to-back meetings. We would have the meeting on the 5th Tuesday and then have a meeting the very next week for the first Tuesday. So this is the 31st meeting, it's the day after a holiday. So that's why I put it up for discussion for you guys, if y'all want to cancel it or not.
What was the possible action we were talking about?
The possible action is to, whether or not you want to cancel it or not. It was a discussion item, and whether or not you want to cancel.
Something else, but maybe we won't talk about that. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Audience?
Audience, I'm sorry, any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. And I did check with the purchasing department, there's no bids or anything that's coming up on that meeting. So, um, reports, Angela Williamson, finance director, monthly finance report.
Charles, before we move into that, did you ever get a final ethics opinion? Or any ethics opinion at all?
Are you talking about on the touch matter?
Yes.
It's, I believe it's scheduled for the June meeting.
Oh, really?
It's supposed to be released by then. I believe it's June, don't hold me to this date, it's in the middle of June. It's June 15th, 16th, sometime around in there.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Chandler. You have before you the financials for the month ended April 30th, 2022. Page one is the revenue by fund report. The city is currently running 28% over budget. Sales tax capital fund revenue decreased compared to April 2021 due to a grant reimbursement in the amount of 211,000 received prior year for LED lighting projects. Gaming revenue is down 7% compared to prior year. EMS revenue is down due to decreased ambulance billings compared to April 2021. Sales tax is up 7% compared to April 2021. Page two is the expenses by fund report. The city's currently running 10% under budget. The alternative fuel stations are over budget, but the revenue is as well at 179%. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. As previously noted, sales tax revenue is up 7% compared to April 2021. Page four is the manning report. The city has two less employees than last month. The total employees as of April 30th is 652. This is 44 employees below the budgeted total of 702. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for April 2022 has increased 25% compared to April 2021, and current year-to-date has increased 74% over prior year-to-date. Current year-to-date net operating income is 55% under budget, and on a rolling 12-month basis, current net operating income is down 4%. Are there any questions?
I got one for, I got one for chief. Didn't we have a, y'all still, y'all doing background checks on people? I know we had an application process. I see you're down 15, that's why I was wondering.
It is a process to hire brand-new officers and employees within the police department. Of course, you have to wait on civil service tests as well as psychological, medical, physical tests. So, you know, it's not something that just happens overnight for us.
I mean, have you got any guys in the process of doing that?
Absolutely. We just had some, take their physical fitness test just this morning. So we're constantly going through applicants, but, you know, the, the goal is to not any, cut any corners and ensure that we have the best possible people that we can working for the city of Bossier City.
All right, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Any questions for Angela? Thank you, Angela.
Engineering Department, monthly project report.
Good afternoon, counsel, mayor. Run through our monthly project updates. We're still hovering around 106 million in ongoing design and construction projects, with 98 of that being currently under construction. We've had a couple of projects added into the designer bid phase, 10 projects under construction, and 11 subdivisions under construction as well. Getting a lot more green on this chart, a lot of progress being made. One of the big ones being the pump station project for the Carriageway. They actually gained more time, believe it or not. They went from about 103 days ahead of schedule to about 107 days ahead of schedule. Phase two of the Carriageway, we can see some of the piles here that have already been driven. They're out there constantly working on that, trying to get that bridge being done. They are still hovering around 13 days behind. They didn't really lose much. I think last month, we had them at 12 days behind, so they're still rocking and rolling out there.
What do you suggest as far as our hearing?
Sir?
He says it's loud.
Oh, it's loud over there? Just a little bit?
My friend, if you walk outside, you got to hold your ears. I mean, it is...
I would say that's a little loud.
Wah, wah.
I'm not, I'm just, I just wanted his persp, you know, his perspective.
You and your neighbor.
You know? Yeah, it's something. But it'll be worth it.
Peaceful. I will, I will say, about two Saturdays ago, came into town, and there was a train on Shed Road, and it was, it would have been nice to be able to hop over. Carriageway Pump Station, we handled the drainage in that area as part of that project. As I said, they're still hovering about 107 days ahead of schedule. They're entering into getting ready to get those pumps online, run some pump startups, and then we'll be able to close that project out way ahead of schedule. East Bank Fire Station, nice picture provided by the designer, good aerial image showing the construction of that coming along, getting ready to look, to get to some of the site paving, getting ready to wrap that up. They're hovering about 76% complete, and they've been staying on schedule here for a little bit. LTRI, they're still sitting at about 92 days behind, but we are working on with the designer and Louisiana Tech on that technology package, and that will get them back up to speed and get them on schedule regarding all those communications. Parking lot out here, I'm sure everybody saw it coming in. They got that forward, I believe, early last week. They're ahead of schedule. We've still got some light poles to be installed and then some minor drainage and then striping, and then we'll be able to close that project out and open that up. Private development, still have a lot going on. I believe the top one there is the preserve, constantly having homes go up and continuing to expand all over the city. Some of our projects entered out to bid. The Highway 71 lighting, we'll be able to, with the ordinance passed today with the additional funding, we'll be able to get with FPNC, award that contract and get that, get materials coming so we can get that project under construction. Tinsley Drainage Basin improvements, we took proposals on that this week. We've issued some, had some recommendation letters from the designer on who to move forward with that, so we'll be turning dirt over on that project soon. And then another one being the Parkway Drive and Elm Grove Ditch improvements, we're still working on acquiring right away for that particular project, and I think that's going to help some drainage in those areas as soon as we get that completed. Any questions?
Where are we at on the synchronization of the traffic lights and updating that software?
So we have completed the Benton Road corridor from, don't hold my, Riverwood to Old Menden. That's one section, one leg of that, and that's working. We're still tweaking a little bit. Sometimes you can catch the Benton Spur overpass signal if you're going a little too fast, so we're still tweaking that one as well. And then also the leg north of that, going from Viking up to Groundly, that one has been done. Airline Drive, we've kind of left it alone because of all the additional traffic going over to Airline because of the turn lanes being done at I-220 and LA-3. because of the turn lanes being done at I-220 and LA-3, which, by the way, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was excited, do you know when that's going to be open?
They flipped it on today.
Oh, did they?
Sorry. So I, that's, that's my fault. I meant to include that, a little nugget. But, uh, thanks to Chief Festus, they did some traffic control out there while DOTD, uh, inspected the new traffic signals. That project is open.
That should cure all of the traffic problems right there?
Every single one of them.
Okay.
So, uh, and then we're still waiting on 71 South. We're still waiting on, there are some phasings that had to be done with DOTD, and we're still coordinating that effort there. So that's where we stand on that. Anything else?
Any questions? Mayor?
I want, uh, this is National Police Week, and I want to thank all the officers in Bossier Parish. And, I mean, the Bossier Parish, Bossier Police, the, uh, Marshal's Office, I want to thank them because, you know, that's really why a lot of people move to Bossier City, for the protection. And, uh, I know every week, uh, it seems like every council meeting, we have resolutions to hire a bunch of new, uh, new, uh, employees and stuff like that, but I want to take a minute to recognize a few city employees who have been committed to Bossier City for many years, and this is celebrating their work anniversary this month. Uh, William Delaney, he's with the Fire Department, he's been here for 26 years. Kevin Little is with the Police Department, he's been here for 20 years. Brian, Brian Payne is with the Police Department, he's been 20 years. Uh, Terry Spence is with the City Court, she's been here for 31 years. Scott Miller, Information Services, 40 years, he's been here with us 40 years. Shelley Anderson, she's not here today, but, uh, she's been here 22 years. James Cooper, Public Utilities, he's 21 years. Rebecca Ross is with City Court, she's been here 30 years. And Curtis Lewis with Fire Department, has been here for 22 years. So I'd like to give them all a hand and thank them for working that hard.
Anything else? Meeting adjourned.